Why don't we call the meeting to order and get started? This is a special meeting of the Newbury Planning Board to take up a discussion and a workshop on the MBTA Communities Multifamily Zoning Requirements and Action Plan, which is due the end of the month. To my right is...
Pete Picos.
And Mary Stone.
Mary Stone.
And to my lef-- no, I'm sorry. It's you to my left.
That's okay.
You're to my right.
Leslie Matthews.
Leslie Matthews. And George Morse will be participating remotely. George?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. And this meeting is being recorded for later broadcast, and all votes will have to be taken by roll call votes. We do have some members of the public here. I just want to emphasize that this is a workshop. It's not a public meeting, a public hearing, excuse me. So we're not required to accept or to take questions from the public, but within reason, I'd be willing to take those questions after we've given the board an opportunity to deliberate. Okay. Martha, you're on.
Okay. So, thank you first of all for taking time out of your day to actually be here and do this. So as Larry mentioned, one of the first things that we need to do in this round for the MBTA communities is to submit an action plan by the end of this month, by the 31st. I sent you all a copy of the draft that I had started, as well as a PowerPoint from the CPTC webinar that was held on December 19th, which provides some background. And I sent a couple of notes yesterday, just specific to Newbury. If you recall, the original guidelines for the municipalities were fairly tough for us to comply with. We were at that time required to have 750 units of multifamily housing, which would be allowed by right.
Which, not to interrupt, it's about 25% of our existing houses.
That's correct. That's correct. And there was a lot of concern sent by us, as well as a number of other municipalities, to the state. They did take those into consideration, and so the requirements were much reduced. So we are now, because we have a population of under 7,000, and we don't have a commuter rail station within our boundaries, we are now an adjacent small town. So as such, we are required to zone for 154 units of multifamily housing. We have 69 acres of what they call developable station area, so that would be within a half-mile of the Newbury Port commuter rail station. But we are not required to zone that area for multifamily housing. And in fact, we don't have any requirement for the area size. So that essentially gives us a fair amount of flexibility in terms of what we'll do. The state has stressed that this is zoning for multifamily housing. It's not requiring us to build multifamily housing. And that really comes into play for us because, as we've discussed so many times, our water and sewer infrastructure is extremely limited. So for any developer who wants to build multifamily housing here, proposes to do a project, you know, that will essentially be on the developer to sort that out. Based on some of the workshops that I've gone to, and I've mentioned this before, up to 90 units can be supported on a standard septic system, Title V system. If somebody wants to do something more than that, it gets into a package wastewater treatment plant, and that's actually not very cost-effective for developments of less than about 300. So, you know, there's this difficult space between the 90 and the 300 or so. So I think for us, one of the things that we'll probably want to consider is zoning a couple of different areas that will support the multifamily zoning. I'm just going to check to make sure the recording is working. So on the draft that I sent you yesterday, some of the action plan information is really just, you know, purely informational. So if you want to go through it very quickly, our MBTA community name is Newbury. We're an adjacent small town, so those are the requirements that we need to follow. On the next page, it's 154 units that we have to zone for, and that's at 15 units per acre is the split requirement. We do not have a rapid transit station within our boundaries, so that's a no. And we don't have a commuter rail station within our boundaries, so that's a no. We do have an MBTA transit station, a commuter rail station immediately adjacent to our boundary, and that's Newbury Port. And we do have area located within a half a mile of that. So I'm going to be the person filling out the form. And on 1.8, I started filling who, you know, other members of the core team will be working on doing this, so I've included you guys, the planning board members. Regional planning agencies not really core team, but they will be helping us. I don't know if there's anybody else, and Town Council, whom I had not put down here in terms of the zoning. So I don't know if there's anybody else that you all might suggest that we include as part of the core team working on this.
Martha, you were instrumental in getting us to who we are, which is an adjacent small town. Can you just describe briefly, for the benefit of all, what you actually did in order to have the state recognize that we are an adjacent small town, as opposed to how they had us categorized initially?
Well, I can't say it's all on me, but I did write a letter. There was a comment period in which all the municipalities could submit their comments and concerns about the proposed guidelines. So I wrote a fairly lengthy letter, kind of explaining what 750 units would mean for our community, what our development constraints were, you know, particularly within the half-mile of the Newbury Port train station. You know, first of all, that area, we didn't get the benefit of the entire area within the radius of half a mile of the train station. We got half of that. And that area, even though I think it's still one that we want to consider potentially for some of the multifamily units, that area's within a water supply protection overlay district. There's riverfront protection, Little River, there's flood plain, there's extensive wetlands, and some of that area is also under agricultural preservation restriction. So for us to be required to put, you know, some significant number of multifamily units in that area was very challenging. You know, I did talk about our lack of water and sewer infrastructure.
Martha, how quickly did they respond to your letter, which covered all the bases?
They actually never responded personally to the letter, but what they did was they took, you know, our letter. We also signed on to a letter that was initially drafted by Middleton, the Middleton Town Administrator. And that listed some, you know, generic concerns, and then mine. Talked about those as well as our specific municipal concerns. So it took until August for the state to come back with revised... Hi, Woody.
Hello, sorry, Emily.
That's okay.
Just out for the record, I remember Woody Knight is here.
Hello.
How many communities were adjacent communities once this delineation was done? About 17? Is that correct?
Martha's describing how she sent the letter to the state to make sure that they understood that we're an adjacent small town.
I could pull it up, but I don't remember. You know, there were 175 communities total that were considered MBTA communities that were subject to this new law, which is 40A, Section 3A. And quite honestly, I don't remember what the breakdown is between adjacent communities and... So there are commuter rail communities, there are rapid transit communities, there are adjacent communities, and then adjacent small towns. So where are that last?
The last one.
The last one.
Well, thanks for describing that to them. I know that you say it's an R U, but you've got the ball rolling, so thanks, Martha.
You're welcome. I will say, I was quite relieved when the revised guidelines came out. And I know I've mentioned this before, but a number of Mass Housing Partnership held a series of webinars that... Just looking to see if this handout actually has that information. Held a series of webinars related to this, talking about different considerations. One was the septic systems. One was a session on site plan review, because the zoning will be by right, but will still be subject to site plan review by the planning board. So, you know, it's not that, you know, the developers will be able to do whatever they want to do. So we will probably, as part of this process, want to be reviewing our site plan review regulations, because right now, they don't really apply to housing, per se. You know, they address parking and site design and all that kind of stuff, but they'll probably need to be tweaked. We can develop design guidelines for the multifamily housing, so that will be part of the effort. And then part of the effort, and what I want to talk about today, is, you know, where we might consider locating these multifamily zoning areas. As I noted in my email, the action plan, I think, is really to demonstrate, you know, a good faith effort to be in compliance. They're not going to hold us to what we're putting down here in terms of, you know, location. Because I think it's going to be sort of a multi-layered task here, so we can identify broadly some locations, but the state, DHCD, has put together what they're calling a compliance tool. And there are some other tools that have been developed, such as an online tool called Residency, and a few others. And these will help us to really narrow down the areas that are appropriate.
Could you say that again, the website, residential?
It's called Residency.
Residency. Interesting. Is that a word?
It's a word somebody made up.
Commonwealth has deemed it such.
Right. It's going to be added to Webster's next year. And there are a number of other tools that will be available for this. MVPC has been looking at the compliance tool and how it can be, you know, tweaked, you know, specifically for communities in our region. And we'll be looking at density per acre of developable areas, so they have excluded certain things like wetlands and that kind of stuff. So, once we get into it, there will be probably, you know, a lot of back and forth on where the areas, specific areas really should be. In terms of compliance, the other thing that the state relaxed for the adjacent small towns is the compliance deadline. So we are now required to submit our compliance document by December 31st of 2025. That's it. That sounds like a long time from now, but as we know, developing zoning and identifying the areas and going through the whole exercise will take some time, and I'm glad that we've got that much time to really be able to do this. We will be looking to MVPC to help us. We may also want to consider getting technical assistance from Mass Housing Partnership. They've already had one round. I think the second one might be open, but the first round was really geared towards communities who have a closer compliance deadline than we do. So these are all things to consider. So the two things that I really wanted to talk about today, one is just very broadly what areas we think might be appropriate to start zeroing in on for our districts, and the second is to kind of lay out the timeline for our compliance. And that will include, you know, public outreach, the required public hearings that we'll be having, you know, just as part of the zoning change. What date, what year we want to target for putting the zoning before town meeting. I think we need to allow for the fact that it might not pass this first time around. However, prior to adopting this 40A-3A legislation, the state had already adopted legislation for multifamily zoning that requires only a simple majority. The zoning change is not going to require the 2/3 majority at town meeting that a normal zoning change or regular zoning change would require.
So Martha, do I understand correctly that we would get input from the state before we put anything before town meeting?
No. So I don't know that they're going to be providing any input on our action plans. I haven't heard that. I think we will be doing our best effort to put together what we think is a reasonable proposal for that. We can get technical assistance from Mass Housing Partnership. I think DHCD will probably be available for us to run things by them, to see if they feel it's in compliance, but I don't really know how much input they'll have on it.
Martha, do you know offhand how far away from the wetland or marsh area is buildable?
Basically, within, it could be up to the marsh area. That will really be more the Conservation Commission. You know, you can build within the 100-foot buffer zone now. You know, ideally, they like to avoid having it within 50 feet or 25 feet, you know, a no disturb or no build area.
Right.
So we have... And then there's 200-foot riverfront protection that will also need to be, you know, mindful of. It's not prohibited, but there are certain square footage restrictions for building within the riverfront protection.
I was just going to add, Martha, I think that the webinar that was put on was very helpful, and I think it is available to review.
It is. I think the link is available. Now, I couldn't find it yesterday, but basically, this packet that I sent you with the PowerPoint with that webinar, and there was also some Q and A, so I will make sure that that's available, send you all the link. And I think all of the MHP webinars are also, the videos are available for all of those as well. So I can direct you to that page and those links, and I can point out the ones that I thought were most useful. Some of them were, you know, more about neighborhood planning and that kind of stuff. And, you know, it's challenging for us because, you know, we are a rural or semi-rural community, so we don't really have, you know, necessarily neighborhoods or walkable neighborhoods or things like that that would be necessarily consistent. You know, there was a proposal before the town many years ago, the village of Little River, which was, you know, kind of, did something like this. It was a mixed-use community with apartment housing and condo townhouses and that kind of stuff as a 40R district. And it was in the area that will be, one of the areas that we'll be looking at today, the intersection of Route 1 and Middle Road. And the developer was going to put in a walking trail to the train station and things like that. So that would really, you know, be consistent with what they're looking for, but, you know, the ability to do all of that right now is probably...
Martha, do you know if we're putting together any kind of a plan for public outreach? Do you hear, do you know whether people now understand what this is or have questions about it? Is there any kind of feedback that you've received or that you know of? In other words, maybe a fear factor, we're going to put in all this housing, and they're all going to be inundated?
There is a fear factor associated with that. There was a lot of, I think, a lot of resistance or a lot of concern raised by the municipalities in general. I haven't received too many emails, but I've seen a few that have raised concerns about it. We've got two members of the public here who might... And I don't know how much word has really gotten out to the residents, so that's part of what we're going to have to be doing.
Yeah, we don't want to have it, if it starts to get to a point where there's disinformation out there, and then that gets lodged in their brains, our community, the members of the community have this idea in their head that is negative and does not reflect the efforts that we're doing here. And understand also that you have been instrumental in making sure that the state understands that we are Newbury, which is a rural community, and that we have constraints that are different from the other communities. I mean, it'd be fascinating to find out how the denser areas are handling this public feedback. But we want to make sure that there's message out there quickly, that this is all under control, it's being handled, and, you know, sort of calm everybody down and not have a chance for this disinformation to get lodged in their brain.
Right. No, I think that's a very good point. So that's really part of what we want to talk about today, is how, you know, how best to get that information out. And I think that, you know, people do need to understand that this is, you know, this is not an optional thing. It's a real requirement for us.
Here's the good news. Rapid communities have to have their plans submitted by the end of 23. I want full compliance at the end of 23. So we have full compliance at the end of 25.
Right.
And so we're one of 35 communities where there's 12 rapids, 69 meters, and 59 adjacent. So we're actually in a good situation. I wanted to get that number, because it's very important, because we're not alone in this position. And the other thing that I think is important in this handout, this was actually a pretty good presentation, they describe, it's on page 15, what is the missing housing component? So we're not talking necessarily about, you know, five-story, really densely constructed situations here. We're talking about duplexes, fourplexes, courtyard buildings, cottages, courts, townhouses, multimedians. And so there's a whole range of possibilities that if, when it's zoned, if it... That's the key of the issue. But this piece is just so that we can identify those locations, right? I'd say it makes the most sense for our community.
Right.
Yeah. So it's a multi-phased approach to what we're doing.
Right. And I think it's important that people understand that, and that, I mean, just listening to Pete and reading this information, I feel better, because now I get it. I get what we're doing and how carefully we're going to do it, and I don't feel that there'll be this massive disruption in the character of our town.
So in other words, we don't need to build apartment buildings to meet that 15 unit requirement.
As a matter of fact, that's not what they're looking for.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, if you go to page 15 of the handout, you know, they're talking about this missing middle housing. So that goes, you know, that's between the detached single-family homes and then the mid-rise, high-rise apartment buildings. So it's, you know, side-by-side duplexes, it's fourplexes, courtyards, cottages, townhouses. So there's certainly, you know, certainly some...
Flexibility.
Yeah. There is flexibility.
But again, we're not building this, we're just identifying the areas where it makes the most sense for our community.
With the understanding that this is Newbury, and this is not another...
Oh, right.
It's rural, and not to worry, we're going to keep it that way.
To the, yeah, to the best of our ability, we will.
Do we want to mention why we want to be doing this, Martha?
So, well, why the state wants to be doing this?
What the penalty is for non-compliance?
Well, there are two things. It's really two-pronged. One is that they've talked about the fact that housing costs in Massachusetts are among the highest in the nation. So the chart they showed, it were fourth highest, both in terms of typical home value and rent estimates, and so...
In the country.
Martha, can you just read off the states that are higher than Massachusetts, like Hawaii, California?
Well, in terms of typical home value, higher than Massachusetts are Washington State, California, and Hawaii.
Right.
So, and in terms of rents, two-bedroom rent estimates, New Jersey, California, and Hawaii.
Amazing.
So, I mean, that has an impact. I mean, there's so many, so many things out there now about the difficulty of affording housing. People are leaving the state because housing is unaffordable.
I just read an article the other day about how Massachusetts is the number-one state for people to move out.
Yeah, I heard the same.
Really?
I heard the same thing, yeah.
The numbers?
Yep.
The highest numbers?
Highest numbers, Massachusetts.
Wow. And what was attached as the reason in this article?
Cost of living, places to live.
Amazing.
They find it cheaper places to live in New Hampshire or other surrounding states.
This happened to be a huge portion of the speech that the new governor made just today.
Oh, really? I missed that.
Yeah.
What is it?
There's a lot of state land that they're actually going to look at and to meet the needs of people that have to live here and to make it more affordable.
Right.
So that's like on the top, one of the top things on her agenda for, within the next, within the first 100 days, to put that together. And she's actually putting a, starting a new office to head this up.
Right. I mean, there's been a tremendous amount of talk about this issue, but I have not heard anybody really saying, okay, this is what we're going to do. Because time is of the essence, and people need to live here. We can't have good, talented people leaving the state. Let's get on it.
And that's the other side of this. I mean, not only is it really tough for our residents to, you know, the housing cost of housing, but, you know, they're saying it also puts us at an economic disadvantage because we're not, you know, we're not attracting the talent and/or keeping the talent. We've got so many colleges here and college-educated people.
Right.
If they can't afford to live here, you know, they're going to go elsewhere.
Of course.
So, you know, there's both the, you know, the kind of human aspect of it, of needing the housing, but also the economic aspect. So the law is basically, you know, right now, we've got 40B, but that hasn't turned out, I think, to provide the amount of affordable housing that we need, and that has its own issues. One of the statistics in here is it says only 14% of multifamily units in the greater Boston area were permitted as of right from 2015 to 2017. I did hear that I think last year was the lowest year recently for building permits for residential housing. And they have, in order to encourage communities to do this, they have tied it to three grant programs, you know, all of which provide funding for infrastructure and various other, you know, other kinds of things that we want to do anyway, you know, even without the housing component, but can certainly help support the housing component. I think there were six municipalities that did not submit the initial document that was required to say, you know, to allow them to be in compliance for 2022. Wall fam was one of them, and so the state withheld $300,000 from their housing authority. I think that's been changed now, but, you know, the state is serious about doing this.
All right. Okay. All right, okay, good. Are we allowed to ask a question now or are we at the end?
Why don't, why don't we hold it?
So kind of one of the other important things about this that I gathered is that we, the areas that we perhaps consider an overlay district don't necessarily need to be right next to this transit area, so it can be in other components of the community. That might seem a little aberrant from the thought that we want to have people having continuity with transportation, but in our situation, it is something that probably wouldn't be feasible. So this allows us a flexibility to look at other areas that might be a little bit of a distance from the actual transit station. So we have to kind of think broader as we, as we look at this.
So when we're talking to potential housing developers and going through the process with them that we do, we always try to have them put an affordable unit within their community, their complex, you know? Is that something that complies? Is that something we can do to meet our, meet our numbers?
So actually, that's a, that's a good question, because they originally, it wasn't, it wasn't specifically, but now there is a provision for affordable housing at eighty percent, so not going below that, not at sixty percent of median income, but at eighty percent. I'm just trying to see if I can find that, that slide. So we can, you know, basically, we've talked in the past about developing an inclusionary housing bylaw, and that would be probably something that we would want to develop along with the multifamily housing.
Right.
So...
So if we have a developer coming in saying he's going to, or she is going to develop this piece of land and seventeen lots, let's say, how many of those lots do we have to encourage this developer to make affordable housing? Because the pushback has always been, as we've tried this and keep to try this really hard ones with somebody, that, that, you know, the other people don't want, the other people in the housing units that they're developing do not want this kind of housing near them, not in my backyard.
So what this does is this kind of is a different avenue to try to achieve affordable housing without having to go through that, because the actual areas will be in the district that allows for this type of housing to be there. Because we're not, we're going to, we have a very hard time nudging typical developers that come into our community that want to do five or six or eight or twelve to make affordable housing, because they're not interested in doing that. They're interested in profit margins.
Of course.
This is a different beast.
Okay.
This is saying, this is what's going to be allowed within this zone district. So the first step is we have to identify those districts through our community that would achieve this. And so that's kind of where we're going with this piece, is that right, Martha?
Yeah, I think, I think so, and I think, you know, just to build on what you just said, I think, you know, allowing housing, and part of the issue is the cost of land is so expensive, and the cost of construction is so expensive. So if you can get more units, at least on a, on a parcel of land, that begins to make it a little bit more feasible to, to, and if there, there are more housing units to meet the demand, you know, that also helps with affordability. But, you know, just to kind of go through the list here, as of right zoning, as I mentioned before, site planning review can be required, but can't impose unreasonable requirements or undue delay on the proposed project in terms of affordability, and this is a relatively new provision, revisions were made in October twenty-first. Inclusionary zoning may require up to ten percent of the units to be affordable at eighty percent of the area median income in all districts, in all districts, in all There are some exceptions to allow MBTA communities to require more affordable units or deeper affordability where feasible as supported by an analysis completed by a qualified third party and approved by DHCD. So basically what they're saying is we can't, we can't require a number that makes the project infeasible for the developer. There are also some exceptions in place for THC programs such as forty-R and UHC-TIF. Mixed use may be allowed and incentivized, but can't be mandatory, and it can't be required to meet higher energy efficiency standards than other uses in the municipality, so, and it has to, has to be appropriate for families, it can't be age-restricted. So those are some of the parameters that we're working in as far as...
No, fifty-five plus, no current...
Can't, can't it be fifty-five plus?
Interesting.
And just so I understand, this, this MBTA community law is quite separate and distinct from forty-B or forty-I or inclusionary?
That's correct. I mean, they can all, if we're going to create a district, and we'll kind of go through that, we could do it as a forty-R district, or we could do it as a, as an overlay district, or we can zone a district specifically for it, but it is separate from all of those.
But I mean, let's say hypothetically, we met our affordable housing goals under forty-B.
Right.
That wouldn't relieve us from any obligations under this new law.
Right, would not relieve us of that. Why? Well, forty-B actually is a separate, so this law requires that it be allowed by right. Forty-B actually requires a comprehensive permit from the zoning board of appeals, it's not by right, so it's, it's a, you know, separate, separate beast.
Okay, okay, got it.
Do you want to talk about the, the areas that you're proposing?
Yeah, so I'm going to see if I can actually call up my map on the screen here. If I can't, then I'll be referring to our board, which is in front of you, so. Bye, George.
All right. See you soon.
Oh, there he is.
So, so we'll see. George, I'm going to make you very small.
You got small.
Make you go away.
But you're still with us.
Went to help you.
Yeah, so...
Can any of these units be used as elderly units owned by another operator?
They, they can't be, they need to be appropriate for housing and they can't, for family housing, and they cannot be age-restricted. So I don't know if that answers your question, but that's...
That's a sure answer, let's go.
Okay.
Oh, and let me, and if we do create districts, it's not, we're not telling the current landowners that anything's going to happen with their land.
That's correct.
We're just saying that this would be an appropriate district, just so, you know, that's, that's where it could happen. And I think that's important, so that somebody doesn't think that we're saying you're going to have to convert your land to this type of environment.
Yes, no, that's...
Right, so there's a fear factor, we have to be, we have to tread lightly on that.
But it sounds like what they're trying to do is incentivize developers to come in and, you know, put up these types of projects.
Right, so...
Yeah, right, true.
Right, so developers might look at the properties within the districts that we designate and say, oh, well, I'm going to approach that property owner to see. So, you know, I've looked at what some of the other communities are proposing, you know, and they, they do have some vacant parcels within, like Newton, I think, has some kind of wooded area within town relatively close to transit and that kind of stuff. We're in a different situation again, so...
You mentioned something early on, Martha, that I didn't understand. You said something about sixty-nine acres of developable station area.
Station area, right, so...
Who came up with that? Was that the state?
DHCD did, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Is that their way of telling us this would be an appropriate zoning district there?
Well, I think, you know, it sort of goes back to the original premise that they had, which was that at least fifty percent of our, our district would be within half a mile of the MBTA, you know, commuter rail station. And so what they did, I think, based on our letter and others, you know, I talked, as I mentioned before, about the riverfront protection and water supply overlay protection and, and wetlands and all of that stuff, and also the area of critical environmental concern. And so I think they, they looked at it more closely, both for us and for other communities, and said, oh, yes, we see all these constraints within this area, so within what we call the station area, within half a mile of the train station, there are sixty-nine acres that we have identified as being, you know, potentially developable. For us, we don't need to build there or zone there, but I think, you know, we could consider some of that area.
Martha, is your...
I just had a quick clarification. We have sixty-nine acres within a half a mile of the train station?
We actually have quite a bit more than that, but a lot of it has environmental constraints on it.
Yeah.
You know, some of them are also in agricultural preservation restriction.
Okay, sorry.
So, no, no, that's good, so, you should be. And I'm going to apologize, I have not used this laptop for navigating the, my map before, so this may be a little, a little twitchy. So what I'm trying to do...
Stop talking while I'm interrupted.
So I pulled up some, some layers here, and let me see if I can make this a little smaller, without losing it altogether, but... I'm sorry, I didn't want to do that. So again, I apologize. Now it's going to be really small.
Trying to get the circle?
I'm not really trying to get the circle, but if you guys can see this, it's also a little twitchy in terms of the zoom. So what I've done here, you can see the municipal boundary up here in Newbury and Newbury Port, the train station is right in here. The two multifamily complexes that Newbury Port has done are right here on Boston Way.
I can't see the...
I can't really see your cursor.
Sorry, you can't see it up there?
Maybe you need to stand up and point your finger light and do that?
If you want to.
Okay.
Thanks.
Tell me if this helps you.
That'll wait here.
Here's the cursor. And I'll try to move it.
Right, so the, the station is right in here. The complexes that Newbury Port did as part of their forty-R are right there. And then our station area was down in, in here, basically.
That's a half a mile?
It's, yeah, half a mile actually comes down just below Hanover Street.
I'm sorry, save once more.
Comes down below Hanover Street. So, I think they actually have the circle on here. MBPC has put together an interactive map of the station, the station area. But what I wanted to do on here is, it seems to me that, at least for starters, there are two areas which could be appropriate for us to look at. One is along Route One, starting in this area right here. So, you know, sort of within the station area. So this parcel right here is the Bashaw parcel, and that is where the solar panels are right now. That was the first Borrego project that was permitted. And this parcel right here is the one that's owned by JRM right now, and this is a residential parcel owned by Bashaw's son. So what you're seeing here, and again, I apologize, it's a little small, this hatching is the area of critical environmental concern, the pink-hatched area. These circles indicate the water supply protection overlay district. There were three potential well areas, one on Matt's property, one at the elementary school, and one on the Bashaw property. And then little rivers coming down through here with riverfront area, and things are very wet over here. But, you know, even knowing that we've got solar panels on here for the next, say, seventeen, eighteen years, this might be an area to look at, this parcel, the Bashaw parcel, and also the JRM parcel as part of the district. JRM is a little over ten acres. Wetlands haven't been flagged, so we don't know how much of that is really developable. We do have more information on this parcel, but I think there is area, upland area in here that could be, you know, considered as part of the district. If you come down farther, the area to the east of Route One seems to be very, very wet. The area to the west, I think, coming, coming down, this is where TW Excavating is right now, this parcel here. So just looking at it broadly, we might possibly consider identifying the, the parcels that are immediately to the west of Route One...
The west of Route One.
As, as kind of our target, one of our target areas.
Okay.
So, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't provide walkability to the train station. We are getting into, you know, much more dialogue. We now have a representative to the Merrimack Valley Regional Transit Authority, so there's certainly conversations starting about getting potentially some bus stops in, in Newbury, and maybe Route One would be a potential for that. Cindy Curry, our CLA director, is actually our representative to the MVRTA, or MVA as they're now called. So, you know, talking about transit for our, our seniors and so on and so forth, so, you know, there could potentially be, be some connectivity along there at some point in the future. It doesn't exist now, but, but that's something else that we do want to talk about, is sort of what factors we want to look at in our districts. But anyway, so that's, that's one area that seems like it might be reasonable to target.
Just to question you, if I owned that land, and I found out that you were telling, you were telling people, we were discussing putting affordable housing in there, how does that work?
It's not affordable, it's multifamily, so...
I'm sorry?
It's multifamily, not affordable, so that's the...
I'm sorry, apologize, multifamily, so multifamily, does that, how do we handle that?
I think that's part of our, part of our outreach.
Yikes.
Yeah.
That's a big one.
Well, again, we're just identifying an area that could be potentially zoned for. We're not saying it has to happen, we're not saying it's going to happen, it's an opportunity.
Right, right. It's, it's an area to investigate as we go through this, but still, yeah.
And as a land, as a landowner, it gives you more options with your property, with your investment going forward.
Okay.
So I look at it as the positive.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, here's one more thing that it could be used for, as opposed to what it's only zoned and restricted on. So I look at this as a positive, if I was in that type of a situation.
If you were, if you were a landowner there, you see that as positive?
Sure.
And how, how would you see it as positive? Just describe that.
So I, I can now allow for more denser development on a parcel that was not, that didn't allow for that.
Okay.
And so...
It helps you financially?
It helps the individual own, own the property financially, and then it helps the community meet its needs, and then it kind of fulfills what our, what our hope is, to create housing that people can afford.
Right.
So it's, I look at it as a win for an area.
If the landowner falls in that zoning area, they don't have to.
No, no.
It's not like someone's taking it by eminent domain or anything like that.
No, no, all that we're doing is identifying parcels that could, this could potentially work.
Potentially be...
Right, yeah, I mean, there's no, no requirement again if this is going to be built, so...
This is a...
I think if folks can get that, can watch that, that zoning that took place, that presentation on the nineteenth of December, I think it'd be very helpful. I'd go back to, to watch it again.
Yeah, no, I think it'd be useful.
Especially if we're going to be the body overseeing this.
Yeah, you know, I'm sure there will be more coming along as well as we go through this whole process.
Yeah, and we don't want to get ahead of ourselves, you know, just, just keep in mind where we're at. Right now, we're just putting a good faith plan together to, to submit to the state, and we're not locked into it. and we're not locked into it.
No, but it has outreach. It's one of our goals.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. But that's down the road a little bit.
But we do need to outline our plan for that outreach, you know, set some target dates for how we'll do this. So, and this is a great discussion. I'm not sure we're actually going to be able to get through all of it today, so, you know, maybe this is...
It's a conversation.
It is a conversation. So depending on everybody's availability, maybe we can reconvene next week even.
Do we have a time constraint today?
Um...
No?
No.
Okay.
Just kind of thinking. It might be good to kind of put everything out, then everybody can think about it, and we can kind of come back. And so that's one area that I was thinking. I'm going to now see if I can...
Yeah. Acreage wise, how much land would that be?
You know, I have not done that calculation yet. As I said, the JRM parcel is about 10 acres, the developable portion of this. I think...
Do you know what the Bashaw parcel is?
Let me see, actually, it is... This is not being useful. I apologize again. I'm not used to dealing with it on the laptop. I think it's overall, I think it's about 60 acres or so.
Sixty.
Yeah, sounds all right.
But it's, you know, it's clearly not all developable.
And our goal is 69 acres?
No, our goal, we don't have a specific goal.
Okay.
Acre goal. What we need to do is we need to zone to get up to 154 units at 15 units per acre.
Right, right.
So, and that will get into discussions exactly, you know, some places maybe kind of low-rise multifamily building would make sense. In some cases, maybe cottages make sense. One thing I haven't done is look at Caldwell Farm, which is, you know, 60 some odd units on a certain number of acres, just to kind of get a sense of what that, what that looks like as, you know, four unit structures.
So that's 60 acres, and how many units?
Fifteen units per acre.
Fifteen units per acre.
Caldwell Farm, you were talking about?
Oh, no. Well, Caldwell Farm is about 62. I should know it off the top of my head, but I don't. That was like 27 acres or something, but that's by the big shared septic system. So, you know, it's not totally unreasonable as one model to what we get as we develop our design guidelines, and we'll have to look at each of the parcels in the district that we're proposing to see, you know, what the developable acreage is on those parcels and what, you know, what it can support and what configuration. You know, think about what's appropriate design-wise for that particular location. Another parcel I had been thinking about was actually, let me see. The MBTA owns a parcel right here. I don't know if you can see where the cursor is right there. And we were actually approached some time back by a Realtor who was representing them to see if they were to sell that, what we might want to see on that parcel, especially because of its adjacency to the Boston Way developments in Newburyport. It seemed like multifamily housing might be a great option for that. But as I was looking at it, I think it's only about eight acres or so. As I was looking at it, there's, you know, a large amount of wetland that goes through it. So I think the development parcel for that, or development potential for that parcel is probably pretty limited. But, you know, if, and I think there is some requirement that the parcels can't be below five acres, and it has to do with adjacent parcels and stuff, so we're going to have to dive into all of this more deeply.
So minimum five acres per kind of developed area?
I saw something about that, but I'm going to have to look at it more closely, and MVPC will help us on that. So Broad Rush, that's one of the areas that I was thinking that we might take a look at. So...
I'm sorry, what was it?
That was one of the areas that I thought, just that western, you know, that western portion of Route 1 from the municipal boundary down to, you know, down to JRM, actually. So that's a little across from one of the Newburyport turnpikes. So down to, again, if you can see my cursor up there, down, you know, down to about here, but above Sled Road.
Can't see the cursor.
Can you see that?
Can everybody see it? I mean, they're doing it, but I can't see it. Right there.
Now, yes.
That's Route 1?
That's Route 1, that's right.
That's Route 1?
Right.
That's Newburyport.
Right. So that's the TW Excavating parcel right there that Pam was pointing out with my cursor.
Thank you.
Thanks. So any initial thoughts, or?
No, you know, I think, you know, identifying maybe three to four or five areas, if you think that's conceivable, Martha. I mean, the stuff closest to Newburyport makes the most sense, of course, for a number of reasons.
Right.
And, you know, the state, who knows what grant monies might be available down the road that might allow for tying in a lot of components that Newburyport might be able to offer. Of course, you know, there'd be something associated with that, but whether it's freestanding, you know, a surge in water or not. You know, if there is a five acre minimum and 15 units, that's 75 units right there for the five acres. So you get two or three of these, we're well within what the goal of this concept would be.
Right. I think some of the district, they have to be bigger than that, so...
Yeah.
Um...
So this might not be a lot, this might not be a heavy lift, quite honestly.
Might not, might not be. I mean, there is one other area that seems that we might want to consider.
Okay.
So I'll see if I can now head south. Oops. Bear with me a minute. So that's the laptop user. Getting close. So the other area that I thought was potentially near the intersection
Right on Central Street?
Well, potentially right on, so, you know, potentially where Pearson Plaza is, if we were to, if there was any interest in developing that in the future as a, you know, say, mixed use, which we had actually targeted in our housing production plan. So as potentially a mixed use development so that the commercial could still be there, but also some component of housing. And even where we are right now. So that's in the Commercial Highway District. So that's right here. This is in the Commercial Highway A District. So, you know, I don't know. This might be a potential location for an overlay district or something like that as well.
And if that were the case, and if we were able to coordinate some sort of busing, you know, or some sort of aspect, that would make it, you know, workable, whether it's, you know, 95 or through the town itself.
Right. And there actually did used to be, this used to be a stop for the coach going into Boston.
Right.
That stopped a number of years ago. But, you know, the advantage of this area, and again, it depends on the capacity, but it is served by the Byfield Water.
Right.
So then water is not necessarily as much of an issue as long as there is capacity. But septic would still potentially be. So that, those were my two thoughts, sort of Route 1 on the west and then in this area.
So you've ID'd four areas so far?
Well, there are two sort of broad areas.
Yeah. But what about, okay, so those are different, the ones you just identified?
Um, well, they're close. I think they're close enough. I'm sort of thinking of it as one area. So Central Street, 95 intersection area. And on the other, Route 1, west side from the municipal boundary down to 108, basically, 108 and Newburyport Turnpike.
On the west side of Route 1, to the south of where self-storage is now, I know there's some areas that are wet there, but is there any upland in there between Route 1 and Boston Road?
There's not a lot. I think...
You know, that corner that's from, basically, the dump to Route 1 and then from Boston Road to self-storage, is there any upland in there?
It's very wet. It's very wet in there. I know the Newbury self-storage parcel, the whole southern end of that is wetlands. So, you know, the self-storage and then KNR taking up almost all of the upland. And then there's one other piece that Bill had separated off as an A and R maybe years or so ago.
Yeah, to the right.
That's upland. It's relatively small.
It's that small. All right.
Yeah.
Sorry, it's not under five acres?
It's definitely, it's definitely under five acres. So I had looked at, you know, say, the area where the woodlot is right now, whether there might be something in there. And I think we could, we could take a closer look at that to see if there's much upland in there.
Yeah, it was just something like that.
But it's also, it's also all in the ACEC, and I think that that's, that in itself gets to be kind of problematic.
So Martha, if we were located right now, if we went across the street, you know, where there's normally a gas station and then there's an open parcel, does that also maybe potentially fall into a conceptual area?
It could, yeah. I mean, we could look at, so that would be...
What is that? What area is that?
Right across the street.
Yeah.
The gas station.
Yeah, it's basically...
You know, to the right of the gas station is all the...
Right in here. And this is part of the Highway Right of Way, the gas stations.
So how much of the Highway Right of Way is it? Three hundred feet or something?
Oh, God, I don't know. I don't know. But it's, you know, it's quite wide there. So this is a parcel of the gas station right now. That's, the front part of it is Commercial Highway, and the back part of it is actually residential agricultural. It's a split, it's a split zone. This is all Commercial Highway A. That's Commercial Highway, along with a number of parcels around this. So I don't know if we would want to actually look at the entire Commercial Highway or focus in.
Martha, in that Pearson Plaza area, is there a water protection district?
Um, I don't believe that the water protection, the water protection district actually, I think, is this that's tied to an aquifer for the Byfield Water.
Yeah, I think there was an area downtown. I know that the church was in Word, there was some concern about that.
Um, yes, yes, it is in the Water Supply Protection Overlay District. Let me see if I can call that up. Get down to zoning here. Sorry, bear with me.
That's the old police station in Newbury. That's the old police station in Newbury.
Oops. Sorry. Now, the pink is Water Supply Protection. It's pink stippled. So to answer the question, all of the pink stippled stuff is the Water Supply Protection This is the Byfield Village Business District right here. That's the Commercial Highway A, Commercial, Highway, Commercial Highway. So there are some zoning, you know, zoning stipulations for the Water Supply Protection Overlay District, so that might be something. Single-family housing is allowed. Other uses are allowed by special permit, which is how the church condo conversion was done.
So, the property that sits, if you're looking at Prime to the right that you're speaking of, I mean, does that belong to Prime?
Are you talking about the existing?
Yes.
Station? So this is the, this is the gas station right here, and then it's all one parcel. It actually goes back this far. So all of this, I think, belongs to the owners of that. And the front part, the back part, it is owned residential agricultural.
Right.
And then that butts up against the Highway Right of Way.
Is there much wetland on the back part of that parcel?
According to this, it doesn't look like it. The wetland extent comes to here. But, you know, this is a GIS layer, and that's kind of historically, doesn't represent the full extent of the wetlands.
And what's the size of this parcel that we're on right now?
Um, this parcel is... I hate this one. I'm going to take, turn the zoning off.
I'm sorry, what was it?
Uh, 10.19, 10.19 acres.
What is a turquoise?
Um, that just indicates the lot that I selected.
Okay. So that's a whole lot.
That's a whole lot, right.
Got it.
So Martha, what would you like from us today? What would you like to accomplish?
Um, well, originally, I was thinking that we might really kind of, well, three things. One, to see if we could make a decision on how we're going to deal with this in terms of just the zoning strategy, whether, you know, we don't have any districts that already comply with Section 3A. We don't have any that necessarily lend themselves immediately to comply. So, you know, whether we might want to look at an overlay district or create a new base district. So that was one thing. Second was to see if we could potentially... Second was to see if we could potentially narrow in on at least a few areas that we might want to consider, and the other was to talk about our, our action plan timeline.
So basically, what you need to complete the action plan is, is to plug in the, the areas that we would consider for the zoning changes.
So we need to determine how we want to do it, whether we want to create a new district or if we want to do an overlay district, we need to set out a time, timeline for compliance, so kind of, we're probably working back from our target date for when we want to bring this before town meeting, and third would be to, you know, give some indication of the areas in town that we're thinking about.
But is all, is that all part of the?
And that's all, that's all part of this action plan.
Well, I think the, probably the best approach, opinion would be an overlay, because it's less, less threatened and allows for more flexibility, so allow what is there now to continue and to then supplement this on top.
Yeah, that's a good point, because we're not then turning a lot of properties into non-conformances or whatever, yeah.
No, I mean, that's my feeling too, doing it as an overlay makes the most sense, because then everything, everything that is there, assuming it's conforming now, would remain so.
Well, let me, let's just throw out it as a thought, what if we were to simply make this a permitted use in the BLI district, if something like that were?
I mean, we could, we could do that. So you're saying make it permitted by right?
Yeah.
In the entire business and like industrial district?
As opposed to, I mean, I'm thinking, I, I think maybe the overlay district is Plan A, but if there's a Plan B, maybe it would be something like that.
Yeah, because things that are there now could change if they wished to, is what you're saying, if we had it.
Right, it would simply, nothing would change, other than the fact that this would be a permitted use.
Yeah, if they wanted.
Right, if they wanted.
That would give a lot, you have a lot more options.
So you would have two options, then you would have option 3.1C as an overlay, and then E as a BLI, so you have two options there.
Well, actually, it would be 3.1B, I think, an existing zoning district or districts that would be amended to comply, so that would be adding multifamily as a permitted use by right.
Okay.
Then, yeah, you can just define multifamily, I guess.
Right, and that's where the, you know, I think that's where the design guidelines and all of that come in. I mean, for that matter, you could, you know, potentially say in the BLI or the Commercial Highway, that, that also gets in potential on Southwood Road.
It opens up your potential a lot more, doesn't it?
Does. So in a sense, that would be a simpler way to deal with than, than creating an overlay district, which is in different locations.
Are there existing multifamilies as you get off of 95, onto Scotland Road, right across from the State Police?
Um, they're two families, they're two, two family condos, so they, they fit into the, you know, residential agricultural zoning.
And then there's like, going north, eastward, there's more of a swath of open land there before you get to more residential housing?
Um, there is, are you thinking on the north side or the south side?
South side.
South side. There is some, I mean, you've got Martin Burns back there. Not sure that there's too much on the south side, actually. So, um, well, I think there are two approaches, I mean, maybe one thing to do, I don't think we're gonna get this wrapped up today, probably.
No, definitely not.
But maybe to think about those two approaches.
Okay.
Yeah, like pros and cons, like.
Pros and cons.
Right, right.
Yeah, I might also, I might be interested if, if she's available, you know, having a discussion with town council about that sort of pros and cons, or even the folks at MVPC, to get, get some, some input, but maybe we could all think about that and think about a timeline, you know, if we were to, say, target Spring Town Meeting of 2025 for the zoning with the possibility of having a Fall Town Meeting if it doesn't pass the first time, will that work or is it cutting it too close?
I should, I would come earlier. I, I would, I would stay in 24.
Spring, a spring of 24.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be tough, tell me.
No, they can be tough, yeah, I mean, that, that's kind of why I threw the question out, if we do, if we target spring of 24, that, you know, really puts the heat on us to try to.
Have our discussions, have our public forums.
Right, right, you know, we have a year and a couple of months to do that.
But again, this isn't unthreatening, this is actually an opportunity to enhance and a lot of other opportunities for apartments, and that's how I would look at it. And I kind of really like your idea.
Yeah, I do too, as I, as I think about it, you know, because it's adding something, it's not putting, it's not necessarily identifying, you know, specific parcels in quite the way that an overlay district would.
Yeah, we just need to be sure that there, to identify that there are enough parcels there that could meet the requirement.
Right, right.
Of size, if, if, you know, if it is, you know, 15 acres together, that might be rate limited in some, some aspects, but might not be.
Yeah, and I think that's a good thought, I mean, that actually encompasses more area than the overlay district zoning that I was thinking about. So why don't, why don't we do, let's kind of take, take those two approaches and, and think about the pros and cons of both of those, and I can put together a timeline based on a target of Spring Town Meeting of 24 and kind of work backwards from that and see how feasible.
The only other thing might be, I, I think leaving it to the spring of 25 is, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, and one of the questions, not to interrupt, one of the questions I did ask, because we have an open town meeting, is what happens if the town meeting keeps voting it down? It doesn't get adopted by the compliance deadline.
Let's think possible, that class is half core.
She's unreal, hey, she's unreal.
I've tried to think, having been through this a few times, I'm trying, you know.
Did you ask that question?
I did ask that.
What I was gonna say, if you wanted to think about a Fall Meeting in 24.
Say, ask again.
Give us another six months or so.
Yeah, in 24, as we start to do this, the board could change, if we wait to 25, you know, different faces on the board wouldn't be.
I understand the particular concept of your strategy.
Right. What, he's asking a question?
Oh no, what was the answer to that question?
I didn't get an answer to that question.
Oh, okay, okay. That's why you asked me.
I think they did recognize that, maybe one reason why they, they pushed out compliance deadline to give us more time to, to kind of work on it and lay the groundwork, but I did not get a direct answer to that question.
No, I understand that, okay.
All we can try, all we can do is try.
No, that's right, that's all we can do is try, and make our best effort, and hopefully, if I understand that, that will happen, I mean, the other, other unknown, although I think the, you know, the, whatever zoning we pass, the Attorney General's office has to approve, theoretically, there will be, well, a couple of things, there is gonna be a model by law which gets promulgated at some point that we can use as the basis for this, and hopefully, the Attorney General's office will be primed to review these things on a timely basis so that, you know, full compliance can be achieved even after we take our vote. All right, well, I will put together a timeline targeting Spring Town Meeting of 24, and we can see how that looks.
All right.
And I'll work backwards from that.
Would, would this be an appropriate time to allow our very patient members of the public to hear some questions?
Is that tummy cheek?
No, 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 you have been very patient, if you just identify yourself, your name, your address.
Okay, my name is Pam Wool, W O O L, at 16 Withington Street in Newbury. That's just, so I have a couple of questions, one is, how does working towards affordable housing fit into this, I, if I understood correctly, you said it may require up to 10% to be affordable at 80% of, I forget, it's median or whatever.
Area median, area median.
Right, and so, I'm not sure, I'm just putting that out there, I know that's probably too big a discussion right now, but it seems like a pretty low expectation, but I also know it's a low expectation in the context of trying to encourage developers to do this at all, so how does that fit into it, never mind low-income housing? Actually, including low-income housing.
Right, I think, I, you know, that's a, that's a good, good question. And I, this is not a real answer to that question, but I know that MVPC, as we move forward into the Housing Production Plan, is taking the MBTA community zoning into account, so your question will be part of the whole dialogue, you know, related to the Housing Production Plan and, you know, what strategies we can use to encourage affordable housing. You know, 40B still exists, if we could find appropriate municipal parcels to, that were sort of deemed surplus, that we could actually put an RFP out for, you know, an affordable housing developer, things like that, and those will all still be mechanisms.
Can you combine in, in working to develop these MBTA multifamily lots, are you able to combine, and for example, you know, you're talking about cluster, village, village things, could you work towards developers who would do the cluster development and then really try to incentivize them to include some of those higher-density, smaller units within it? I mean, is there much push within this group to work on that aggressively?
I think there's been, yeah, a, a strong desire to.
We have been nudging, but we haven't gotten very far with our nudges.
Okay, so nudged, okay.
Yeah, we, we, we've tried, we've had discussions, it's, you know, it's a complex onion, it really is.
It is.
Yeah, and that's kind of the, the nice approach about this, and I keep pointing to this because there's a, there's a graphic on it, which kind of describes the, the sort of housing that it's trying to, to encourage, which is different than what we've been doing,
And I do have one other, just one question, is the Old Town Former City Hall, is that a feasibility for developing for, I don't, first of all, I don't, I think it's probably too far to meet this.
Well, location doesn't really matter, and actually, well, that's in the district where we're dealing with multifamily housing up to four, but by special permit. The town is still working towards getting our municipal offices back there, so, so, you know, at this point, probably not something that we want to include.
I, I did realize that, yeah.
That, it's probably not five acres either, so.
Oh, no, the parcel's, yeah, the parcel's very small, you know, you might be able to do a two-family there or something like that, but it's not, it doesn't really lend itself to achieving too much of anything. Anything else?
Well, I have tons of things, but I think I'd over, overdo it.
John, do you have anything?
I'm John Harwood, 162 High Road, I don't hear very well, so I can see that there's a wonderful trove of documents in connection with this MBTA community's new legislation that I'll be able to access and understand more fully as time goes by. I, I don't envy any of you folks considering the complexity of this issue among everything else that you have to deal with, it's a lot to absorb.
It is, thank you.
So, thoughts, shall we look at a time to reconvene on this?
Yeah, let's do that, sure. Since we all have our calendars, do you want to use my calendar? You can put your stuff on my calendar.
No, I got it, I got one. Thanks.
So my, my, my plans have changed, so I am here next week, if that works for everybody. Or would you look at the following week, whatever works?
Yeah, did you have a particular day next week in mind, Martha, or do you, or would you prefer to take another week with it?
No, it's really kind of up to you all, let me just check my calendar to see if there's anything. Oh, there is, I think I sent this out to you all, hold, while I'm looking at my calendar, there is another CPTC webinar, zoning with overlay districts on the 12th at 6:00 PM, in case anybody's interested in that, but my help is sort of clarify some of the pros and cons of, of using overlay districts as opposed to underlying zoning. So, really, whatever works for you all.
I'm looking at Thursday, and I have something labeled in here, but I don't know what it is, I just have a block.
Thursday during the day?
Yeah, well, no, I'm just, I'm wondering, was kind of a repeat of this work, like a Thursday at 3, or a Thursday at 2?
I can do that.
What's for me? George?
Was it on that field, the 11th?
The 11th.
Yeah, I'm kind of in the afternoon on that, but.
No, Thursday's the 12th.
It's the 12th.
Oops, sorry, 12th.
Okay, excuse me, 12th. Yeah, I'm kind of at 2:45 when they're out.
On Thursday?
Yes.
Would the morning work, or is that out for people?
Morning would work.
I have to be in Denver's at 11 for a doctor's appointment, so.
Okay, so that's not great for you.
Would you want to try, George, would Thursday at 1 o'clock work?
Uh, no, I figure.
Next Thursday, right?
Right, yeah, I'm having a meeting at 1:90, as long as I can, and then go on my way.
Wednesday, George, you said Wednesday was out for you also?
Yeah, no, actually, Wednesday's fine.
Oh, Wednesday's fine?
Yeah.
You want to try for Wednesday?
Is this Wednesday, the 11th?
The 11th, yeah.
Is that a 2 o'clocker?
Sure.
Or is another time, it's, do we have a meeting that night too?
No, not, not next Wednesday.
I might have to leave by 2:45 on the 11th, I don't know right now.
You want to do it earlier, 1 o'clock?
1 o'clock.
Yeah, that, that would, that would be better.
Is this next Thursday?
Uh, no, we're, we're Wednesday, the 11th at 1 o'clock right now. How's that for you, Woody?
Perfect.
The best?
Works for me.
About a next week and a week after, or a week after.
Second week, right?
Yeah, next, next Wednesday.
So let me just double-check and make sure that.
We can come in here.
Rent is available.
I mean, I, I might not have to leave early, but I just don't know at this moment.
It should be, there's a, actually, it just doesn't say what it's gonna be. There's a Library Board of Trustees meeting next Wednesday from three thirty to five, but I would guess that they probably do that in the library. So, as far as I know, there's another calendar I need to check, just to make sure the room's not reserved for some other purposes. So, but we can confer about schedule if need to. So, let's say, next Wednesday, the eleventh at one o'clock PM, I will confirm.
Okay, if that doesn't work, you show it, you find something.
Wednesday on our call.
When is the one o'clock? That's what we're looking at.
Okay. That's good for everybody?
Okay. If we're done, motion, it has to be a roll call both, but if anyone would care to move to adjourn?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, sir.
With us reconvening. Do you want a motion, one, two, and one?
No, I don't think we need a motion to reconvene.
Yeah, I don't think we need to do that. We may not want to do that in case it needs to be changed.
I would think a motion would be just adjourned, sir.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Leslie. Peter, how do you vote?
Uh, yes.
George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
And Woody?
Yes.
How do you vote? And I vote yes, so it's unanimous.